Mr. Antonio.
Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Gleefeld.
I'm here.
Kivachi.
Here.
Mr. Golson.
Here.
Ms. Carrie Nychiff. Dr. Morris, here. Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg.
Here.
Isabel DeTaksta.
Here.
Tatum Morris.
Here.
Great, thank you. Would everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome everyone to the September 29th meeting of the Whistahicken School Board. If we take a look at our agenda, we first list out our prior meetings. And the board met on October, excuse me, August 26th for our regular public board meeting. And then on September 22nd for our Communications Committee and Curriculum and Technology. And then our upcoming meetings are in October. October 6th is our regular meeting. And then October 13th, we have a Health Wellness and Safety and Racial Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And October 28th, we have our Facilities Committee meeting. And now we have our presentations. Before that though, I did want to welcome Tatum to her first meeting this evening. So welcome, Tatum. All right, in our first presentation, I'll be turning it over to you two ladies for the Whistahicken High School Monthly Highlights.
So yeah, welcome again. It's gonna be an awesome year. So to start off, we have 17 students who completed the AP Caps and Diploma. So that is basically when you complete and pass the AP exam for seminar and research, which is basically like a whole year project. And you present it to college board. Hopefully you get a good score on that. And then you have to also take a couple AP exams. I believe it's like around three. And then also pass those exams with three or higher. So that's really nice. And we also have, we had the 9/11 concert for camaraderie. It's also really beautiful and neat. Another cool thing is that the golf team actually won the Seoul Championship, which is really neat. And then seven medals were won in Girls' Cross Crunchy, which is also really cool. And then for cultural stuff, we're gonna have, what's the saying? Heritage Month. So for HLN, we're gonna have a end of the year party on the 15th of October, I believe. And we're gonna have like a huge potluck so we can share like all these cultural foods with the rest of the school community. That's really neat. And today was actually the first meeting for Town Hall. Tatum Moss was there too, and that was really cool. So we can finally like get this idea, which Town Hall basically is going to be like a way for students to gather under like one banner, let's say, and speak all these concerns they may have about the school to various leadership roles, like the students who may be in DAPC or like school board, or like other like StuCo as well. So that's really neat and we're glad to have it kickstarted. We already have like a QR code should anyone have any issues. So that's gonna be really neat. So yeah, thank you.
And last week, we also had our Homecoming Week and that was really fun. We did a spirit weekend. It was nice to see all of the students participating, especially the freshmen, you know, coming into the high school and like picking up some of our norms. And then we also had a pep rally, which is very nice. And we saw a lot of participation from the freshmen as well and also from the teachers and students. The teachers and students did a dance and the football team and cheerleaders also did something as well. And then Homecoming was also very nice. I went and I saw a lot of teachers there. It was a lot of fun. And then also Whistling, we've been conducting weekly, semi-weekly check-ins with our freshmen and that's been going pretty well. They are a little bit quiet, but it's nice to like get feedback and they've been becoming more comfortable and like building connections. So it's been nice.
We're actually Whistling partners for our homeroom, funnily enough. So it's also really neat.
Nice. Well, thank you so much for those highlights. And I came out for Homecoming on Friday and what a game. There was just like so much energy there as well. So it was just such a great event. So I really enjoyed the Homecoming festivities. And thank you so much for all the other information about what's been going on at our high school. Does anyone else have any comments, questions about what's been going on? Yes, Steve?
You've mentioned the Town Hall before. I think that's a great concept. It sounds like if there are a lot of questions and a lot of concerns, how are you gonna manage that within a certain timeframe?
So we have like a leadership committee, which is made up of about around 27 students. However, not all of them are dedicated to, let's say, managing the QR form. So we're gonna have students who are dedicated to social media and like the PR, like marketing, all that. And then those who are dedicated, let's say, to these issues. In future meetings, we're actually gonna, like if we see, say like one issue that's really popping up a lot, we're gonna actually have a meeting to then have the student body come up with potential solutions. So we're not like the only ones handling this because we wanna make this a solution opportunity for everyone. There are no presidents. We're all technically officers, like no one's like more important. So we all feel like this sense of like, hey, I actually did something and it works, right? And I can make an impact whether if I'm like a freshman, a sophomore, an upperclassman. So we're gonna do that. If it's a smaller issue that we don't see too many responses coming up, we're gonna try to tackle it in these planning meetings, which we will have like monthly. And then show like the student population like, hey, you guys said this and we actually did this to solve it. Or we're in these steps. We take these action steps to potentially solve this and like have a solution or like meet some middle ground if needed to.
Thank you. Sounds like a great plan.
Yeah, I have a follow-up question regarding the Town Hall. I mean, I think the concept is fantastic, the opportunity for a number of like student leaders, club officers and folks from a broad cross-section of the Whistahicken High School community brought together to share thoughts and ideas and, you know, I guess, issues and concerns. So it's obviously a great opportunity for you as students to come together and share ideas and thoughts. Are there representatives from the high school administration that are part of that session as well?
So Mr. Brooks is like our advisor and he, I guess, could be like a spokesperson, but he wants us to be mostly an effort from us, the students. However, if any teachers also wanna be part of it, they're more than welcome to go. It's just such a new thing that teachers don't even know what it is. So once we have a couple meetings, I feel like they're gonna see the ideas, see the vision and definitely come up and show up with either suggestions as well. Or maybe like, it could even transform as a, hey, you guys are talking to teachers maybe to solve these issues too. So that's basically it, yeah.
All right, thanks. Sounds like a great effort and looking forward to hearing more about it in the months to come.
Of course, thank you.
Great. Any other comments or questions? All right, then we'll move on to our first public comment period. And let's see, I don't have any registered in person. Is anyone? All right. All right. Well, then we'll move on. But there's no one else registered for first public comment? There are now hands raised online. Okay, then we'll move on to the Board President Report. And this evening, I have the approval of our 25, 26 district goals and ongoing priorities. Just reviewing. Yes, we'll approve them next time. But I'm gonna have Dr. Dewan go over these with us.
Thank you. Yes, this evening, we are excited to share the updated draft of the district goals. Each year, the board and administration work together to set clear district goals that'll help guide our priorities and focus our efforts for the, for the school year. And so these goals are designed to essentially ensure our schools continue to thrive and to move towards success. In our August board meeting, I explained how the goals are identified, but I'll briefly explain that again here. As a part of the process last spring and throughout the summer, I did a lot of listening and learning as a part of my superintendent's entry plan. But I also did some work in listening and connecting and collaborating, not just with community members and students and staff, but also our leadership team and our board to, to learn about what the areas to prioritize would be. And so in this presentation, it's structured in a way that will first see this sort of goal statement. So that's the broad goal description. And that'll help to show what the overarching goal and vision is for each goal. And then it breaks down into what's called a SMART goal. And that is an acronym for a specific measurable, achievable, relevant and time-bound objectives. And that'll help define what we're working towards specifically as a part of each goal. And then it further breaks down into something called key performance indicators. And those are the checkpoints so that we can help monitor how we're moving and making progress toward each goal. So this is just an overview so that you can understand where we're, where we're going in terms of the goal conversation. And we have four overarching themes, which are outlined here. And these are the overarching areas that we talked about at our August meeting. So this is not new information here. And so we'll move into goal number one. And the overarching goal is to create consistent school-wide positive behavior expectations and restorative approaches. And of course, this is rooted in an interest toward helping our students to feel safe and respected and cared for and feel that sense of belonging. And this slide is where we'll see the SMART goal and the key performance indicators. So I will read aloud to you all of the text that's here. It's available for you to review. I've sent the presentation to the board in advance of the meeting last week. And, and so this, this goal number one is really essentially is, as you heard me say, about creating consistent expectations in each of our school surround, around positive behaviors. And of course, ultimately, we want all of our students to feel safe and respected and feel like they belong. And so by June 2026, our goal is to have all students have fully implemented school-wide expectations and restorative practices. And you'll see on the right-hand side that success is gonna be measured through our trainings for staff reduction and disciplinary powers. And our student staff and family surveys around safety and belonging. Our next goal. I'm looking at goal number two. It is to focus on strength in communication and transparency. And so again, this is the overarching vision sort of statement that will help situate the goal. And this was a part of the August board. So now we'll take a look at the SMART goal and key performance indicators. And so again, this focuses on building trust through consistent, timely and transparent communication. We know that our families and staff and students should have clear and accessible pathways to get their questions answered and get concerns resolved. And by March 2026, administration will have district-wide communication protocols in place. And we expect to have, we hope to have, we aspire to have 80% of our families report satisfaction with our communication on our annual survey. And I will take a look at goal number three. And this is the language that you may recall from August. Ultimately, this third goal is about ensuring all of our students have access to rigorous and equitable learning opportunities. And the centerpiece of this work will be developing a portrait of a student. And that's a shared vision of the knowledge and skills and qualities we want for every student in our district. And so this goal is, we're taking a two-year phased approach with this goal. So year one, the focus is on developing a roadmap for our process for year two, which will be where the actual work happens to actually engage the community in create, finalizing and adopting that portrait of a student. So with year one, we'll develop that roadmap. We'll gather input from stakeholders and build leadership capacity, which is an important stage in the development of the portrait of a student. And then year two, administration will work with engaging all of our stakeholders and create and finalize and adopt the portrait of a student. And with this goal, while it is looking at what we have as a vision for our students in terms of acknowledged skills and incompetencies, it's important to note that while this work is underway with this goal, our district, our staff, our administrators, our departments will be continuing to do the work that we have been doing around the academic progress that we have, engaging our staff and think, thinking about, taking a look at the data processes that we've been talking about in terms of multi-tiered systems of support, making sure that we have our system set up in such a way that's our teachers are working with students at that tier one, which is the core, the foundational skills in our classrooms across all academic areas, using data to drive decisions around interventions in the classroom and making sure that our students' needs are met. We know this year, we have the implementation of our new math curriculum resources. Recently, our science curriculum resources, all of that work will continue to happen. And this will be a part of the two-goal based approach where we are developing that portrait of a student. Let me take a look at goal number four. This is about a long-term facility sustainability. And then we'll transition to SMART goal and our key performance indicators. So this is about planning for the future of our schools and facilities. And by June 2026, administration will present a two-year capital improvement plan that will address building needs and role-making capacity and long-term sustainability. This is about how we're investing in our facilities so that our learning environments remain safe and adaptable and supportive for years to come. And so now we'll open the floor for questions from the board. Ultimately, the goals reflect our commitment to safety, to transparency, excellence, equity and sustainability, which are all topics that we've been having conversations about in our community. And our, it's intended to really support the district's vision to make sure that our schools are learning environments where our students feel safe and staff feel safe. And this is belonging and are inspired to engage and excel to their fullest potential, which is our district vision. That may sound familiar. And so we're excited to engage in the conversation with the board this evening to talk about this roadmap ahead and certainly are eager for feedback, insights, questions.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Dewan. Did anyone have any questions or comments? I know we've already given some feedback into what we already have. But did anyone have any additional feedback before we finalize these goals? Joe?
I would just like to thank the administration for putting the KP, the Key Performance Indicators and associating them with each of the goals. It gives us something, I think, that's like tangible and measurable for us as a board to monitor and hear updates on periodically throughout the year so we can gauge progress towards the accomplishment of the overall goal. So I appreciate the effort that was put into coming up with these key performance indicators and looking forward to hearing updates about it as we proceed through the year.
Any other comments? Dan?
I have a question regarding the communication protocols. Did you have any like ideas about what specifically you would make protocols around? Like maybe communicating emergencies or, I don't know, I, what were your specific ideas with that? I mean, I know there's more specific things in this overarching plan, but I was just wondering like if you had specific categories. Because I do think one of the things that's really important is like consistent communication across buildings, that they're sharing the same sort of information in the same timeline. Because it gets a little tricky when people are comparing information from building to building. So go ahead.
Thank you for your, for your question and your feedback. And that is part of it. So in terms of the feedback we've gotten from the community, both from the parent satisfaction, family satisfaction survey, as well as conversations that I had the pleasure of engaging in throughout the spring and the summer, that was something that kept coming up in terms of communication specifically around safety concerns or incidents, student incidents, safety incidents, building incidents. And so that is one of the categories that we'll be engaging in conversations to ensure that there is consistent practice in our approaches as well as a resource toolbox for our leaders to be able to leverage. So that it's in the midst of something that they're managing as a leader. We wanna make sure that they have those tools that are quick and easy to access in order for them to push out appropriate information when it's appropriate. There may be the case that the community continues to feel like we're not giving enough information about student incidents. And that's something that is a push and pull in many communities around student incidents. Because oftentimes, there is some community who want to know more than we are legally able to share. And so we are going to continue to uphold our duties and responsibilities as it relates to student privacy issues. But we know that these are, that we can continue to grow. And so that is why this is our, one of our goals. And that is absolutely one of the categories. So we'll have more conversations throughout the year. And of course, we'll be sharing updates with the board and the community as the year progresses. And that'll be something that we had conversations about actually at our Communications Committee meeting, thinking about how are we going to be sharing out with the community throughout the year, what we're doing and how we're progressing with those goals.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Well, great. Thank you so much again for all your work in putting these together and finalizing them for us.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful questions, both this evening as well as prior to this evening. And special thanks to our leadership team who engaged in the process as well. And so we look forward to sharing updates throughout the year.
Wonderful. I look forward to that. All right, now we'll move on to our superintendent report. Back to you again, Dr. Dewan.
Thank you. My pleasure. So this evening, our presentation for the superintendent's report is a five-year enrollment summary and 10th day enrollment report. This is a presentation that's annual, excuse me, this information is shared with the community annually. The, the method that we're presenting is different, you might notice. But the content of what we're sharing is the same as what has been shared in prior years. And so we'll walk through an overview. This is the first slide here, which gives a K-12 enrollment totals by year in terms of that five-year look back. This year, looking at the, each, for each of the five years, we're looking at the 10th day enrollment figure so that we're comparing 10th days for each of these years. And so we can see across these five years, it's been relatively steady over the last few years. This year, of course, we're at 5,135 students. So you see on that bar graph on the left is the, the enrollment totals by year, looking across the five years. And then on the right side of this screen, we see the overall enrollment totals by grade level, K-5. And so we'll see, of course, middle school and high school when we get to those slides. But this is, this slide is helping us to see the overall enrollment totals across kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade as a snapshot looking at the 10th day enrollment, if that makes sense. Yeah. Okay, so now the, the next six slides, we'll take a look at each school, starting with Blue Bell. So here in our Blue Bell slide, we can see on the left side of the screen, and you'll see that consistently on the left side, you'll see the five-year look back in terms of the enrollment total for each of the schools. So this year, Blue Bell is at 500, looking at the 10th day enrollment figure. And again, relatively steady when we look across those five years, 504 five years ago and 500 this year, growth in between, but relatively steady for Blue Bell. And then on the right side of the screen, the chart that you'll see for each of the elementary schools includes the grade level, the enrollment number in that grade level. So for example, kindergarten, there were 77 students enrolled as of the 10th day of school. And then there are four sections in kindergarten at Blue Bell. So four kindergarten classrooms. And the average size of the class in kindergarten is 19 to 20. And the reason why we're saying 19 to 20 is because the actual average would be, you know, 19.3. And that's hard sometimes for a community to think about point three child. That doesn't exist. And so instead, we're saying 19 to 20. So the average is 10 to 20. And so we'll walk through each of our schools in this format at the elementary level. For the board's reference, I provided some information and there's information in board docs where you can reference the class size guidelines, which is relevant to our conversation, of course, this evening. And then thinking about what are the upper limits of those grades, right? In terms of our district policy and administrative guidelines. And so I'll just briefly reference that here. And again, if you're in board docs, you can access the guidelines for Policy 126. As well as the little chart is in there for you to easily reference. In kindergarten, our upper limit is 22. Grade one, the upper limit is 24. Grades two and three, the upper limit is 26. And grades four and five, the upper limit is 27. And so that's not a hard and fast, you must not exceed or you must beat. But that's our targeted number to make sure that we are structuring our, our number of sections as efficiently as possible while also keeping the class sizes manageable for our, for our students and staff. So we'll take a look at Lowagvenet. You can see the left side is the five-year total. So currently at 596 to the last year. On the right side, we see enrollment by grade level and the average class sizes. And as we move along to Shady Grove, which is our largest school at the elementary level. You can see here, 689 people last year, nothing significant, 14, 14 students or so. So not a significant dip. And then the class sizes and the number of sections and the number of students enrolled. Moving to Stony Creek. Same structure. 636 total number of students. Take a look at the middle school. And here we can see increase in enrollment, right? We know that. We had that cohort of 504, excuse me, 455 sixth graders that came in this year. That's that certainly added 50 students overall in terms of the growth this year compared to last with overall 1,256 students at the middle school. And then we'll take a look at the high school. Relatively, relatively steady, a little bit of movement overall. 1,458 students currently at our high school. And then this slide is showing the number of students who are enrolled in other programs and facilities. And so this information is helpful to know when we think about the number of students enrolled in cyber charter schools or brick and mortar charter, charter schools or other out-of-district programs. And those numbers for those categories are not counted in the overall total enrollment numbers that we just reviewed. However, when we look at the Whistahicken Virtual Academy or North Monaco Technical Career Center, those students are included in our account when we looked at the high school and middle school specifically. Some information again was provided to the board around the cost of these programs in the context of conversations around enrollment. So that could be helpful information. You could have at your, at your fingertips there.
And then we'll open up the floor for questions and feedback.
So thanks for the presentation of the enrollment figures. One thing that I know since I've been on the board, the district has grown by 800-plus students since I joined the board about 10 years ago. And for the last several years, we had kindergarten cohort sizes that were in excess of or around 400 students. we had kindergarten cohort sizes that were in excess of or around 400 students. This year, we have 351 kindergarten students. I think last year we had maybe like 3, 370-ish. So I mean, what that, I guess what I'd been wondering for the previous stretch of 400 plus kids coming into kindergarten, if that kept going forever, maybe we were going to keep growing forever. What's interesting to me, the past two years, our kindergarten cohort sizes have, have shrunk down to more, I think, historical averages, which are around like 340 prior to me getting on the board. So the, the big boost in enrollment that we've experienced, we're going to have those kids kind of working their way through the system. So we're going to have larger than normal cohorts working their way through the middle school and into the high school. But then it looks like maybe we might be entering a period of more moderate class sizes or cohort sizes going forward. So yeah, that's what, that's one of the things that struck me.
Any other comments or questions?
So obviously, it's, it's not a big stretch for fifth grade at Shady Grove, but it is touching the, the upper limit there. Are there any other supports or, or assistance given to the fifth grade teachers, given that?
We actually have had some conversation with the principal there around this very topic. It's something we're monitoring. The, the last conversation we had was this, this morning. And, and so it's something we're monitoring. We asked him to continue to keep us in conversations around. Should there be a need for us to employ additional resources or supports? But at this time, it sounds like things are pretty steady. I know that conversations in late, excuse me, early August in looking at the numbers at Shady Grove, now that would have been with the former principal at that time. But there was some intentional decisions around thinking about the positions across the school and where the greater need was. And at that time, the decision was to not, I'm careful how I say this, because if I just say it in terms of numbers on a chart, it sounds like move a fifth grade teacher to kindergarten, but that wasn't the case. But moving a position that could have been in fifth grade to kindergarten to make sure that the numbers there were lower, which resulted in a little higher numbers in fifth grade. But thinking about the overall needs in the school and where there was likely to be greater growth would be at that kindergarten level. And so thinking the fifth grade numbers are likely to be steadier throughout the year at Shady Grove and that that was a wise decision at that time that Dr. Biaka made. And we had conversations with Principal Kelly around that, Mr. Kelly. Yeah, but it's something we're going to continue to keep a close watch on because should there be a need that arises or concerns coming around those numbers, we want to make sure that we're being responsive.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question about, you know, we had a lot of conversations last spring about this sixth grade class. The number that we had originally was 477. I see it's down to 455. So about, I don't know, 5% loss, give or take. Is that a normal average, like historically for that number of children to maybe go to a private school or otherwise? Is that a normal sort of shift?
There is a level of reduction over, over time. I don't know that I want to say, yes, it's normal. I have not run those numbers specifically and explicitly around that, so I don't want to misspeak. But I can say that there is, there is sometimes a natural, a sort of movement as, as the cohort moves from elementary to secondary in any district. To the extent that it's been typically 5% is not something that I have data for, but I'd be happy to take a look at that and provide a follow-up information to you.
Yeah, I was just curious, only because too, when you get, when we get the class of 32 in eighth grade and we have two big classes behind them, I'm just like concerned about capacity and teachers and class size. So just want to keep an eye on that.
Thank you. And that certainly is something we're keeping an eye on as well. Been having conversations with Dr. Nicoloff and thinking exactly about that. So it's, it's top of mind for us. We know it's top of mind for the board. We know it's top of mind for the community as well. And it's something that as we have conversations about enrollment projections, which will be a little later in the year, we'll be needing to have conversations around what does that look like in terms of supporting the, those cohorts coming up? Capacity at the middle school. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
I just wanted to take a look at slide nine, which shows our, our students that are in other programs and facilities. Just to highlight something for, for the board and I guess the public as well. So what this shows are the, the, some subsets of our students who are placing other programs outside of our, our regular school buildings. And if you look at our charter population, we have 25 in cyber and one in brick and mortar, 26 kids there. But then we also have like in, I guess, our in-house cyber option, which is Whistaken Virtual Academy, which we run in partnership with the Montgomery County IU, and we have 18 kids there. The board was presented with some information from Tim prior to this meeting that had tuition rates associated with each of those programs. So as you guys know, for every kid that any school district sends to us a charter, whether cyber or brick and mortar, we have to pay that charter school a tuition per student. And it varies based on district, based on your expenditures. But for us in Whistahicken, for every charter kid that we have, cyber, brick and mortar, we have to pay $16,000 if they're a regular ed student, and I think it's about $40,000 if they're a special ed student. So that's tuition that we have to pay those, those charters. On the flip side, if we have a student in Whistahicken Virtual Academy, it's a rate of, it kind of, it's based on number of credits they take, but they're assuming they're taking a sort of a typical student load. It's about $4,000. So if you're looking at a regular ed student that chooses to go to a cyber charter versus Whistahicken Virtual Academy, the one that stays at the virtual academy, there's, it's 16,000 versus, so it's $12,000 less as a cost to us as a district to educate that student. Five years ago, we had zero students in Whistahicken Virtual Academy. But once we had it started, now we have 18. If you look at the differential, each one of those kids saves the district $12,000, which doesn't sound like a lot, but those 18 in total, that's close to a quarter of a million dollars savings to our budget every year that they're in the Whistahicken Virtual Academy versus going to the cyber. So that's like a positive impact to the district and our overall finances. And the more that we could encourage kids to go to our own virtual academy as opposed to all the cyber, I mean, that would just further, further benefit us financially. But beyond that, I think we offer a much higher quality educational experience in our own virtual academy versus any of the, the cyber charters or even brick and mors that are out there. So I guess my thought would be for the administration to do, continue to do whatever they can to make sure people are aware of Whistahicken Virtual Academy. And for those who are choosing charter options, to encourage them to consider staying in-house with us. Again, because not only is it a positive benefit to our finances and our budget, but it's also a better educational experience for, for those students.
Joe, just to piggyback off that, from a budget standpoint, you know, in the state, there is a proposed cut or set rate for cyber charter schools. And obviously, we don't have the budget yet. We don't know what's happening yet, but that would be set at $8,000 a year. It says that's starting this school year, but I can't imagine that's true if there's no budget anyway. We'll see, we'll see if that happens, but that would save us a significant amount of money as well. So.
We're watching that closely as well.
Anything else on this? Well, then thank you again. And then we'll move on now to the assistant superintendent report.
We have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, secretary report. I didn't think you had anything to cover.
I don't. Okay. No report.
Confirming. All right. Board secretary report. I think you do have something.
Yes. This month, there are three minutes for the board's approval. August 28th, regular board meeting, communication committee, and curriculum technology meetings on the 22nd.
And treasurer report, yes.
This month, we have the August 31st treasurer's report for approval.
All right. And I'll do one second. HR report?
Still staying with me.
I am.
Our new HR for tonight. Good evening. For your review tonight are eight items under section 13 of the human resources report. The first two action items include resignations, retirements, appointments, and changes of status, extracurricular changes, and volunteers. I would also like to acknowledge Mr. Dan Udembroch, beloved teacher at Whistahicken, who passed this late summer well in service. Our thoughts are with his family, friends, and colleagues. Item 13.3 is the final report of the year for staff that advanced on the salary schedule due to educational attainment. 13.4 represents the inductee mentor list for the 25, 26 school year. 13.5, year-long extracurricular activities. 13.6 is for a one-year extended agreement with Gallagher Benefits, our longstanding health benefit plan consultant and advisor. 13.7 is the MOU between Whistahicken and the WEA outlining the roles over the technology tech tier two assignment. And finally, 13.8 is in agreement with our previous assistant business director, Lou Kim, for providing contact contracted preparation of an annual audit materials. This concludes the report.
Thank you, Tim. All right. Questions on any of those three reports, secretary, treasurer, or HR? Well, thank you, Tim. Now we'll go to our committee reports, and we're having some uncovered communications as well.
Yes, I'm happy to take that. We had our communications committee meeting on September 22nd. And at that meeting, we began by reviewing a draft goal statement to help guide our communication priorities for that board communications committee. The goal statement is something that we'll continue to work on, and that's intended to serve as a foundation for our work in connecting with families and the community. At that meeting, Kristen Rawlings also presented the results of the 2024, 25 parent satisfaction survey. We talked about the data. We discussed participation levels. We had great questions from the board members around the survey administration timeline, et cetera. We also explored communication tools for the 25, 26 school year. And that was a conversation that highlighted some of the tools such as the Whiswatch newsletter, Whisminute, Whis Safety Newsletter, which is new this year, as well as monthly newsletters and opportunities were discussed to expand and enhance our outreach efforts to the community. We talked about communicating the 25, 26 district goals. I spoke a little bit about that earlier when we talked about the goals, but there's some conversations and suggestions thinking about how to broaden community engagement around the goals throughout the school year. We talked about clarifying and supporting the community and navigating the pathways to resolve issues and concerns to make sure that their needs are met. And then discussed the, the timeline for the annual report and the video promotion plan. The annual report this year has QR codes, which includes several videos. Our communications department did a phenomenal job with the whole report, but also with those video clips. And so we talked about not just the, the timeline for releasing the annual report, but also how to help promote the videos that are a part of that annual report. And so that was shared out as well as the timeline for, for the mailing. So you'll get the actual annual report in your postal mail in the next week or so. Exciting. Really good work. So special thanks to our communications department and our communications chair.
Wonderful. Thank you. Does anybody have any comments or questions? All right. Well, thank you again. We'll move on then to our curriculum and technology.
All right. Yeah. So we did have a really good meeting this September 22nd, last Monday, I suppose. And Dr. Gardner is going to tell you a little bit about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To recap, the committee meeting that we had, that was the board curriculum and technology committee, committee meeting. We started with a five-year review of high school low enrollment courses. And these are courses that had one section and had 20 or fewer students enrolled. And on that chart, courses were highlighted in red if the enrollment fell below the administrative guidelines using policy 126. And gray boxes indicated courses that did not appear on the low enrollment list that year. Following that, we had our director of equity and cultural responsiveness, Kazia Latour, presented an overview of the code of student conduct. And that included tiered responses and an overview of what that looks like within the code of student conduct. She followed that with an overview of the federal and grant expenditures for the 2025, 2026 school year. And we finished with an update to the, or an update, we reiterated where we are with the MCIU World History Course. We won't be offering this course to the MVP students this school year. And we will be doing further evaluation of the changes made to the course and determine if we will consider offering the course in the future. I will keep going to item 15.2. Item 15.2 is the payment of the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit for Age of Beginner Summer Services for summer 2025 in the amount of $17,558.05. The MCIU Age of Beginner Program costs are for students who are school age, but their parents have decided to retain their child for another year in their early intervention program and not send them to the Whistahicken School District kindergarten. The first Age of Beginner invoice is for students who received summer AOB service this past summer. Item 15.3 is the outplaced educational services and tuition costs for the 2025, 2026 school year for one student. The Farewell Academy was on our list of approved outplaced educational services from item 15.3 on our August 26, 2025 board agenda. And the outplacements are identified by the district because a particular program at another institution is determined to best meet the student's unique educational needs. And item 15.4 is to accept and expend the federal and state grant funds for the 2025, 2026 school year in the total amount of $1,6735.20. This includes the Title 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A federal grants and the Ready to Learn Grant, as well as the PCCD, School Mental Health and Safety and Security Grants for the state grants.
This did come up via board discussion previously. Thanks, Gerald. But the state funds, I realize these grant funds, but before we get to the finance report, Mr. Bricker, if you wouldn't mind, I think everybody's aware that the state budget has not yet been passed. So how the district is managing the fact that we haven't received any state funds?
That's correct. Without the federal state budget, we have not received any funds. Currently, one of the things that the state has allowed us to do is to not pay their portion of the Peasars, which is about $2.6 million, which is helpful. They've also offered to help with debt service should we need it. You know, the first section of the debt service, which is due in November, Whistahicken's in a good position. But as we progress in the length of this stalemate at the state budget, we get to March, I would be looking to take that in section.
So Tim, as a follow-up to that, because the state budget has not been passed yet, no funds from the state are flowing to our school district or any school district in the state. It seems like in the short term, we don't have like initially cash flow. But at what point would cash flow potentially be a problem for us? How long could the state budget have been passed last, basically, before it caused this cash flow?
I would say I would start getting worried coming to some, end of December, see where we're going to be with that. And because the driving piece of the state's budget to us is Peasars and social security. And that would, that's the larger chunk of the items that we get from the state. So those would be the areas that I'd be a little concerned with, since they're allowing us to not be able to Peasars currently. Will be okay, but if that changes, which I can make any decision I want at that point, it could change my answer.
So as long as we get to state budget by Christmas, we'll be all right.
It'll be a nice present.
Yeah. Well, I mean, thankfully, we're in a position such that we're not as negatively impacted by the state budget impacts as, you know, the vast majority of districts in the state. So it's good to hear, though. This is not going to put a capital situation at risk, at least for the next few months. Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just wanted to say quickly, the code of conduct review by Ms. Latour was really, it was really interesting to me. I really enjoyed hearing the specifics about it. And she, I just wanted to like highlight a few things that I really felt were important. There's two different code of conducts for like K to five and then for secondary, six to 12. There's two different Code of Conducts for like K to five and then for secondary, six to twelve. So they're separated based on like age appropriateness, obviously. And one of the goals is to create like a common language and approach across all schools and incidences so that we can be fair and equitable. And then the goal, she said, is to create positive school culture and PBS aligned. So and she also talked a little bit about the PBIS as well. And I thought that was, I hear a lot about it, but to really hear her talk about it was really interesting. And I, I think it really is something that, it doesn't take away consequences. It places expectations, and there's acknowledgement of harm caused, but there's also still consequences. And I think that's something that parents want to know and hear in that. So it's not, it's not taking away consequence. And I think that was something that is a concern to some. So the presentation was excellent, and it felt to me like with the rollout of PBIS and this common language and approach, I think that's going to help with how buildings deal with issues. So I was really appreciative of that.
Great. Anything else? All right. We'll move on then to Facilities and Transportation. Joe?
Thank you. We have two items up for review and discussion tonight and for vote next week. And I'm going to ask Tim to give us a brief summary of each of them, please.
Sure. The first one is the proposal from MAK Services, Inc. to provide snowplow removal services for twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. They were the only bidder in this. We feel comfortable with moving forward with this bidder because there is no price increase for next year. There's a slight increase in year two and then in year three. But overall, our relationship with MAK has been good. The fact that they're keeping their prices the same from this year to last year to this year is strong and something that we consider. We would prefer larger bidders, but given the current state of the economy and prices, long-range bids are difficult for clients or for vendors, and we do feel comfortable with their bid. The next one is the acquisition of three ten-passenger vans via trade-in of two Whistaken School District vans via a Co-Stars agreement, not to exceed a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Capital Reserve. Just giving some background on this, one of the vans is probably got maybe a couple of months left of life in it, and it is a ten-passenger van, so we'd be replacing that. The other two vans that we would be replacing and trading in are seven-passenger vans. And the difference is a ten-passenger van, we can take eight students on, and a seven-passenger van, we can take five students on. This will give us a little bit more flexibility in our transportation, bringing all of Whistaken School District's vans to ten-passenger.
All right. Thank you. Any questions about any of those items?
I'm asking a question on behalf of Zephy and myself. Do you know what it is? Can any of these vans be electric or hybrid? Is her.
Not for a ten-passenger at this time. It's not, it's not economical for us at this point in time.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Finance Committee Report?
We have seven items for review tonight with voting next week. The two are normal, the regular review of payments and the financial reports. There's one item to waive stadium fees for a fundraiser in October. And then four items related to acceptance of donations. One from the Blue Bell Home and School Association, one from Lower Quinnen HSA, one from WEOFF, and one from the Stoney Creek HSA.
Any comments or questions? Thank you for that report. Policy Committee Marshall?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Thank you. Yeah.
I have no report. Steve?
Sorry, you have a new name. Yes.
You were close.
Nothing at this time.
And then we'll go on to our reports of board representatives. Extracurricular Marshall?
There's nothing new today. First marking period meeting.
All right. Thank you. At CIU, the only thing I was going to note. Saying find, do it again, you'll let me know. So we are putting together a gift basket for our fundraiser. They're having a trivia night for their education foundation. And all the board members are contributing towards the gift basket, either an item or a financial donation to put something into the basket. If we're not going to give an item, so I didn't know if anyone had any ideas of something WIS-specific we could put into the basket, or if anybody wanted to contribute towards putting money into the basket. But if anybody has any ideas to share, just send me an email. Let me know some WIS ideas for this gift basket. It's up till November, so we have a little time to come up with something. All right. And that's my MCIE report.
Yeah. So for North Monco, the major item at the board meeting a couple of weeks ago had to do with, again, reducing the waitlist for students trying to come in. I know that the superintendents all met and discussed this. There will be a more specific detailed plan put together on that that will include some potential expansion within the North Monco building and rearrangement of classroom space, et cetera.
Steve, a quick question. What's the waitlist of, for what courses or program is the waitlist for?
Oh, the waitlist spans pretty much most of the programs that are offered by North Monco. But obviously, it varies depending on program. So for example, welding has more of a waitlist than some of the other programs. The largest waitlist right now are health, so health services as well as cosmetology.
Just out of curiosity, how many of our, our students are, I guess, always?
So our students, we did have an enrollment from WIS with the inclusion in eighth graders this year. And I'd have to go check, but our waitlist is actually relatively low. I think it's only maybe three at this point in time, but I need to double-check that.
Okay. Thanks.
Again, front row and sober, your top.
So, yes. Yes, that is, yes.
Thank you.
I'll update next week with something. Hopefully, a state budget. And I have nothing for, I just drew a blank. What am I doing next? ERC?
Thank you. Great. Thank you. All right. Well, that brings us now to our second public comment period, which is on a school-related item. The board appreciates sharing the community, maximum of five speakers per speaker on the same topic. Please leave a comment to three minutes in the interest of fairness and treat all speakers equally. It's the board's practice not to gauge and dialogue with speakers when appropriate. Responses on board dots. When approaching the podium and speaking online, please state your name and your municipality of residence and the topic you're speaking about as well. All right. We'll start online. Is, pardon me, I wish you could get back on. Scaler is not online, but we do, Jason Falco, who's just going to test our director. Okay, that's tested. See if it's working.
Testing comments?
It is working. Yes. No other hands raised online. Okay, then we will go back to our one, our two in person. Simon?
Ask them this. How can you be against white supremacy in America and the idea of being a state based on race and class, but then you support a state like Israel that is based on supremacy, that is built on the ideas that Jews are supreme to everyone else? I consider Osama bin Laden as one of the people I admire. To me, he is in the category of Malcolm X, Che Guevara, Patrice Lumumba, and Fidel Castro. I thank Islam for bin Laden. America's greed, aggressiveness, and self-righteous arrogance must be stopped. War and weaponry must be abolished. You're probably thinking that I'm a misinformed, uneducated radical extremist, but these aren't my words. They're the words of two individuals whose faces are proudly plastered on the walls of Whistaken Middle School in the name of uplifting marginalized individuals. As a marginalized individual myself, I can tell you that these individuals and their words make myself and my child feel threatened and unsafe in the building she spends most of her time in. This mural violates several district policies, and notably, there are zero Jewish advocates represented in any of the murals filling many halls at the school. While we do appreciate that Linda Sarsour, as well as her quote, will be painted over, and we do appreciate how seriously this matter was taken by Kazia Latour and Dr. Nicolov, the students were put in an unfair position by administration by allowing them to sign their names to art, which is not fully vetted. Additionally, the figure who openly praised Osama bin Laden after the atrocities of nine eleven will remain on the wall of the eighth-grade hallway. Jewish students were further put into an unfair and uncomfortable position when asked to discuss their feelings on the mural with the Asian and Muslim Student Associations, given that they weren't included in the conversations prior to the creation of the mural. Myself and others would appreciate it if the board would respond to the following questions after this meeting. What is the process for approving public displays at Whistaken School District buildings? Who is the staff member and which position is responsible for creating the approval process and approving displays? The Whistaken School District harassment policy states that harassment is a form of discrimination inclusive of graphics, which may be harmful or humiliating or interfere with a person's school or a school-related performance when such conduct is sufficiently severe, persistent, or pervasive, and a reasonable person in the complainant's position would find it creates an intimidating, threatening, or abusive educational environment such that it deprives, adversely interferes with, or limits an individual or group of the ability to participate in or benefit from the services, activities, or opportunities offered by a school. The admin should be pressure-testing any displays against the harassment policy prior to approving them, and I do hope you will be doing so moving forward.
No hands raised online.
I'm here to, my concerns raised in kind of last year about Whistaken Virtual Academy run through the hands to you specifically. Mentioned was brought up at the curriculum meeting on Monday. Specifically, I wanted to ask for an update, not just on course removal, but on the district's conversations with the MCIE in the virtual academy last year in terms of what is going to be done to vet these future curriculum, curriculum courses at the academy. I agree. It's a great option, you know, compared to the charters. It's something that I think we discussed last year. We as a district have more control over content. I'm just curious, what happens with the MCIE? I wanted to also ask what steps are being taken to address re-educating those couple of students who didn't take the course in the last semester. It was never heard of last year. I think the board, not just to prevent this material from being forced, but to make sure that those students who had that missed education, that they're given proper education in an unbiased, extreme way. I, I don't want to bring these questions directly to the curriculum on Monday night. I mean, I know I can do that too many times. Did just mention, unfortunately, that was planned during the new position. So a lot of us are ready to attend in person and have a discussion. As this is another recent occurrence, as like Lynn mentioned, in the district have a merger recently. It's evident that the protection and safety of our students is really around. Jewish students represent about twenty percent of our district, so zero point two percent of the world. Twenty percent of our district, so not insignificant. So I wanted to ask the board to respond Q and A after this. What are the plans for anti-Semitism training for the Whistaken staff, not just books? You know, specific areas that I've been talking about throughout the district. And many of our neighboring districts are already implementing this. It's certainly provided, hopefully, resources and connections to what they're doing. I just think it's really important that our twenty percent of our students falling into that category. And we just love to hear an update on what the plans are and who, who are what.
So this is our second public comment.
Hi.